Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, October 22nd, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'd have Commissioner Kirk with a second by Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda's approved. Next up is the approval of minutes from the meeting held Monday, October 8th, 2018. Do I have any requests for changes or amendments? Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Farr.
Yes, I do. On the minutes for the public hearing on the Eden Bluff 4th Edition for C.H. Robinson, meeting minute pages at the very end, 12 and 13. The motion that was made at the bottom of page 12, if you want to look at the last paragraph there where the quotes start about the changes to paragraph 1B in quotes, revised landscape plan is required to include a landscape and all parking. I think you should just take out the "a landscape," it should read "to include landscape in all parking lots." And then, three lines down from that where it says, "The temporary screening shall be required to be installed during Phase 1, semicolon, further," instead of the text going to the next line, the text actually shows up on the top of 13 at the end of the first sentence, starting with "the approximately 15 coniferous trees, dot, dot, dot." And so there's two sentences that are just flip-flopped. I might encourage you to maybe listen to the video, a recording of it, and you'll see that the sentences make more sense when flipped. Okay? Thank you.
Great. Any other? Entertained a motion to approve as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend to approve the Planning Commission meeting stated October 8th, 2018 with the changes noted to the motion made on the Eden Bluff 4th Edition project.
I will second the motion.
Commissioner Farr with a second by Commissioner De Sanctus. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on tonight, we have public hearings. The first one is Noterman Residential Development. Location for Northwest Quadrant to Flying Cloud Drive and Spring Road. The request for guide plan change from rural to low-density residential on 8.34 acres. Zoning district change from rural to R1-13.5 on 9.54 acres. MUSA boundary extension on 8.34 acres. Will the proponent of the project please step forward? Good evening. Could you state your name and spell for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. John Shardlow, S-H-A-R-D-L-O-W. I'm a planner with StanTech Consulting. I'll be making a very brief presentation and then happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you.
Just briefly with me this evening are the property owners, Bert and Bonnie Noterman, and also Jack Perry, who's a legal counsel to the project. Let me start out by saying that we accept and support the staff recommendation. I think it's always good to get that out. We will, when the time comes, forward with requests for the zoning. We're more than happy to bring a detailed project development plan. We can talk a little bit if we want to about why we didn't do that at this time, but we're more than happy to and always expected that we would at some point. In addition to that, it will be our expectation that we will come forward with a planned unit development application because of the nature of the property, the environmental sensitivity, the steep slopes and so forth. We're going to want to make sure that we voluntarily commit to density restrictions and that we voluntarily come forward with low-impact development standards and that we work through the planned unit development to strategically place the buildings on those lots, not only work best with the landform, but also to make sure that we don't have any buildings jutting above the top of the hill or blocking any of the views of the neighboring property owners. So I just, we're not here, we're not asking for that tonight, but I just did want to make sure that you understood that when we do come back with a development plan, we do intend to process it through the planned unit development. This is just a graphic that shows the residentially-guided portion of the property. And what I'm showing here is just essentially the building envelope, if you meet all of the respective setbacks. And the point I want to make with this is that even if you were to limit this, the development on this site to a single house, that house could be placed anywhere within this building envelope, and it could also have accessory structures that could be, could be very large as well. So I think when it, when we do start talking about the development plan, it's important to recognize that the land does have development potential. It is a developable parcel. So we need to be comparing something to something. And when we look at that development plan, making sure that we're looking at the actual development potential of the property. So just very briefly, the Notermans have owned the property since the 1970s. It's always been their intention to develop the residential lots on the property when public utilities became available. Throughout this time, they've been in conversation with the city officials and have been assured throughout that time that the city was developing in a staged fashion with its orderly growth with utilities. And when those utilities were available to serve the property, the property would be able to develop with those utilities. That's consistent with the purpose statement in the, our rural district, which reads, "One of the purposes is to prevent premature urban development of certain lands which eventually will be appropriate for urban uses until the installation of drainage work, streets, utilities and community facilities and the ability to objectively determine and project appropriate land use patterns makes development possible." The Notermans petition for the extension of sanitary sewer as part of the Eden Prairie Road project. We worked very closely with Rod Rue and his staff and also Hennepin County on a number of different iterations of those designs. At a meeting just not too long ago, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the plans for the site plan. And those site plans reflected the kind of final solutions for the service of the property with sanitary sewer. The council did approve that request, did order the project at the same time as they did the Eden Prairie Road project. It's important to note that the plans that were recently approved for the Lions Tap site include lateral locations to extend to serve the, whatever lots are developed on the subject property and that there were sleeves proposed underneath the parking lot to serve the residential area. The process of getting this project approved with the Lions Tap started in 2013. I've been doing this for about 41 years now, and I don't remember too many that were as long and involved as this one. It really wasn't anybody's fault. We had a good working relationship with the city staff and a good working relationship with Hennepin County, but we couldn't really do parts of the process until the county's plans were done. And then when the county's plans were done, we had to accommodate the city's plans for the sanitary sewer and water extension, and those were subject to change. So I think we did probably six full iterations of the site plan to get to the ones that were approved. And again, that wasn't as a result of any lack of cooperation, it was just the way the process unfolded. The fact of the matter is with the several hundred thousand dollar assessment that the Notermans are accepting for the Lions Tap, it's become a very, very expensive project, and they're making a major commitment to the city of Eden Prairie to have the Lions Tap there for the foreseeable future. So we want to make sure that, that when we come forward with the development plan that we, we propose a number of lots that fit well on the site. And we will also come forward with our best sustainable development practices for the subject property. And again, as I said previously, as someone who's an environmental planner, I would want to make sure, if I was in your chair, that, that the development wasn't going to be sitting on top of the hill that you, we fit in so that what you'd see looking at that landform is the tops of the trees that are on the top of that property. And we will also make sure that the buildings are placed to protect the neighbors' views. So again, we support the staff recommendation, we're happy to answer questions. Mr. Chairman, I just respectfully request the opportunity to respond to other testimony. If, can you get your chance?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any initial questions from the members? Thank you. Julie, will you walk us through the planning's report?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the request before you tonight has multiple parts to it. First of all, the request is to amend the comprehensive guide plan from rural to low-density residential on about eight acres. Also to extend the MUSA line to serve an additional eight acres approximately. And then, thirdly, the request is to rezone the entire property, about nine and a half acres, from rural to R113.5. Staff has reviewed the request, and as you saw in your staff report, staff is recommending approval of the regiding to low-density residential on the balance of the Noterman property as well as MUSA extension to the entire property as well. Right now, about an acre and a half is within the MUSA boundary, and they're asking for that MUSA to be extended to the entire property. With regard to the request for zoning to R113.5, staff is recommending that the rural zoning be retained on that property. As the applicant mentioned, there's not a development plan that has come in with this proposal. It is typical in Eden Prairie to see a development plan come in at the same time in order to understand the broader impacts of the overall development that's being proposed. These are unique properties. They may have cultural resources or archaeological features on them. There are bluffs, there are certainly significant trees, there may be steep slopes, there may be shoreline, there's a lot of things to consider. So staff is recommending that the rural zoning be retained until such time as a development plan comes in and a thorough analysis can be done in order to determine which is the appropriate R1 zoning district in order to bring that development plan and the zoning into compliance at the same time. The current language in the comprehensive plan does say that the rural district, as well as other R1 districts, are compatible and corresponding to a low-density residential guiding. Staff is further recommending that additional language be added to the comp plan that addresses, in this particular case, that if a zoning application comes in without a development plan, that retaining the rural zoning until the development plan is submitted is appropriate. So staff is recommending approval of the comp plan, regiding, the MUSA extension, the text change to the comp plan, and is recommending denial of the rezoning to R113.5. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Farr.
Can I ask staff, what was the initial trigger to prompt the discussion of the utility extensions along with this roadway improvement project out in front of the restaurant? The PowerPoint presentation suggested that there was a petition by the Notermans for utility extension to the restaurant itself, but was that the initial thrust of the requirement or discussion to extend utilities?
Mr. Chairman, members of commission, the, there's been a long history of this whole area for Eden Prairie Road, south of the creek. There, I believe it was 2013 or so, 2012, the Eden Prairie Road to the north was, was, there was a feasibility study done to get utilities in the Reader Ridge area and Toll Brothers area. That was kind of the first stage or first section of Eden Prairie Road that was improved and utilities extended. This section to the south, which is currently under contract to be constructed, was about two years ago. And that was, that was always planned to be done at some point in time. The Notermans, particularly the Lions Tap property, requested a, or requested a petition to have sewer and water extended to that site, for the restaurant site, due to a failing system and the need for city utilities. So that kind of precipitated the second stage or the second phase of Eden Prairie Road improvements from kind of the Reader Ridge, that, kind of the top of the hill there, if you will, south to Flying Cloud Drive. And then as part of that, we extended utilities over to the Lions Tap. So it was kind of a two-part situation where the petition to serve Lions Tap, the best way to do that, we looked at several alternatives, the best way to do that was to extend utilities down Eden Prairie Road. So once that decision was made at the council to include that, the method to how, or the, the ability to, to serve that area with utilities was down Eden Prairie Road, then that improvements were included in Eden Prairie Road improvements. So it's been, there's been a long history and hopefully that tries to explain it, but the current project that's under, that we have recently bid and approved, council has awarded, will take Eden Prairie Road down the hill from where it ends now, the improvement ends, down to Flying Cloud Drive and extend sewer and water all the way over to Spring Road along Flying Cloud Drive to serve Lions Tap and, and the surrounding residential areas.
Okay. So, so staff was willing to engineer the size of those utilities to serve these properties for that intended purpose that, that they requested?
Yeah, whenever we do an improvement, I mean, each situation is usually different.
Yep.
Or unique. But in this situation, the request was to serve the Lions Tap. But as we're bringing, we're bringing a lot of sewer and water lines to them, there's some benefit along the way. So even some, even though some of those areas were outside the MUSA, we still provided that ability to serve those properties when they, when or if that MUSA line was ever extended. So just prudent way to do the design so, so that we didn't have to come back and upsize anything or provide service stubs to those areas. So that was all planned as part of an effort to make sure that we didn't preclude it from happening in the future.
Okay. So where it gets foggy for me is the extension of utilities for the purpose of providing utility service to a property without extending the MUSA line. When, when do we have to extend the MUSA line to provide utilities or not? Because if I understand it right, our recent approval of the restaurant utility hookup didn't include extension of the MUSA line.
Yes, well, there's another situation where as, as part of that whole process, when the Lions Tap petitioned for sewer and water improvements, that site was outside the MUSA line. They requested basically an island, if you will, of that area being allowed to serve, be served with utilities. So even though it doesn't show it, there was an approval granted by the city and Met Council to serve that commercial property with, with city sewer and water, outside the MUSA.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Commission? All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and speak for or against this project, please do so now. Good evening. If you could state your name and spell for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dean Edstrom, E-D-S-T-R-O-M. And my wife and I live at 10133 Eden Prairie Road, which is directly northwest of the proposal. We actually own land just to the northwest side of the proposal and then the complete acre and a quarter basically on the east or the west side of the proposed parcel. We've lived in our home for 45 years. And over these many years, I've been dedicated to protecting and preserving the bluff. On the whole, the city has done a fairly reasonable job of at least protecting the bluff slopes. There have been some problems, such as the new Eden Prairie Road, but nevertheless, the bluff was worth preserving. This afternoon, I took a hike out on the bluff. The sun was out, it was absolutely beautiful. The big blue stem, little blue stem, Indian grass were waving in the breeze. The red oaks were set against the green cedars. It is a beautiful area. I remember, I'm reminded of the journalist, the lady journalist from New York who came in the mid-1800s Eden Prairie and in effect named the city Eden Prairie because she saw the bluffs. As I said, we've done a fairly good job trying to preserve the bluffs over the years. I don't know that there are many, if more than one or two residences actually on the bluff slopes. So if, if a change is made tonight, or you know, on this proposal, it's going to be a big change in terms of Eden Prairie's approach to the bluffs. But, you know, so I would recommend to the commission that it do not approve any of the proposals this evening. Because if the MUSA line is extended and if the guide plan is changed, then as a practical matter, it just creates more dominoes toward an ultimate rezoning. But all that is not a great deal of help to the commission, as I view it, because in addition to the proposal we have this evening, you have a 19-page legal brief submitted that tells you that you are compelled to approve each of these proposals, including indeed the rezoning. And if you are compelled to approve it, or the city is compelled to approve it, that means you have no discretion. Your recommendation doesn't mean anything to the city council. The city council has no discretion. And indeed, the Met Council, as even stated in that opinion, has no discretion with respect to the extension of the MUSA line. So you are under threat of litigation. There is, there's a term used at the end of the legal opinion called legal consequences. When you combine the words compelled in several places with the term legal consequences, that is a threat of litigation. And it seems to me that this matter, if it has not already been done, Mr. Rosso can advise on this, should be a matter handled under the city's litigation protocol or whatever the appropriate procedure is. Moreover, in view of the litig, in view of the legal brief, and I must say that I disagree with the brief on its facts, on its assumptions, on its law, and on its conclusions and the logic associated with it. Perhaps Mr. Rosso has considered all of that. I do not know if Mr. Rosso has given the Planning Commission or the staff indirectly advice that indicates whether he agrees with or does not agree with the legal brief that's been submitted. But if, in fact, that legal brief is either adhered to by the, by the city or if in court it turned out to be right, then as I said, you, the council, and the Met Council have no discretion whatsoever with respect to this project. Consequently, my recommendation to the Planning Commission would be to, once again, refer this matter to the city attorney for more detailed instructions and opinion from him with respect to what the discretion of the Planning Commission might be and indeed what the discretion of the city council, if any, might be on the matter. So you can make, and the city council can make, a decision which is unhampered by a legal brief that threatens the city with litigation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll entertain the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion by Commissioner Freiberg. Do I have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor closing public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing's closed. Any more discussion or questions from the commission?
Given the fact that there is a legal brief that exists at this time that has been prepared for one of the applicants, it would be helpful for me to know if Mr. Rosso has any thoughts before we take final action on what we're going to do tonight.
Be pleased to address that. One, I have, of course, have consulted with the staff on the recommendations, and I find each recommendation to be fully supported in law. I don't particularly think it's appropriate or necessary for me to comment on Mr. Perry's letter to the staff. I reviewed it. You know, there's some things that I disagreed with, that, you know, he wouldn't expect anything different. But in terms of the recommendations that the staff is making, I believe they're reasonable and supportable under the law and are appropriate for you to make a recommendation on with, to the city council.
May I, may I follow up?
Commissioner Kirk.
Mr. Rosso, the one thing that, that was interesting to me is Julie and the staff in their report talked about, we had several aspects of our ordinances that allowed us to protect the steep slopes, the bluffs, and I think there were three particular aspects. And reading the legal arguments that were presented, there were an, there was an argument there that negated all three of those. So I understand you just said that you believe in, that the city's, the staff's recommendations are all supportable, but could you expand maybe a little bit on those? I think it was, I don't have them off, the steep slope and what were the, the three aspects that were specifically noted in the staff report that would help us protect development on the bluff?
Yeah, the steep slopes and, and cultural.
Yeah.
Aspects, heritage aspects. I believe that our ordinances do give us authority to regulate in the manner in which staff is proposing in, in the memo. I know that Mr. Perry's letter on behalf of his clients, the Notermans and Mr. Peterson, was very firm about, you can't do that, you don't have authority, you have to do that. Okay. I read that. I believe that we have authority to do what the city planner is telling you is the manner in which it would be handled. I hear Mr. Shardlow saying, "We're going to go through a PUD process," which indicates to me that there's a recognition of working with the city here. And, and so I, we're, we're not, the staff is not, maybe just to address it directly, staff is not taking this position because it's afraid of the arguments being made and we don't want to get involved in litigation. That's not the case. From the very start of the process, I found staff looking at this from a planning point of view of what's the best process to go through for consideration of development on this property. And I, yeah, I think Mr. Perry's letter came at it from a point of view of perhaps thinking that there was going to be a brick wall and an outright denial, and he had to come on very hard. And frankly, that was not staff's case. I mean, back in 2013, there was a recommendation to move the MUSA, and the council approved that. And so there's, there's a receptivity beyond this body at the, at the city council to approvals. And so staff was acting with that history and looking at the property from that point of view. So I don't mean to be critical of Mr. Perry's letter or the approach he took, but it, we're, we're not in a position of reacting to that. it, um, we're, we're not in a position of reacting to that with these recommendations because of what, um, might be perceived as, as threats. So it's, I truly do believe my analysis that where the council, where the staff came down is a supportable approach under the law. And I also believe that, given that, I'm not going to have to defend it, which is a wonderful outcome.
Thank you for expanding on that. Other questions from the commission? Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Farber.
So despite the legal tensions, um, I'd just like to cut to the chase and ensure that, uh, staff, uh, it sounded like was supportive in prior years of any possible development on this downward side of the bluff. And, um, I'm still hearing that they're not putting up that brick wall. I'd like to just maybe hear some, some language, maybe from, from Julie or others on, on the, that topic, that a residential development of any scale or nature, those improvements, would be received, I should say warmly, but, but with, with due process through the city, as opposed to, uh, you thinking that this is probably not going to happen for a variety of reasons. Do you understand where I'm going with that?
I think so, and I'm sure you'll redirect if I get off track.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so as Mr. Shardlow stated, his belief on behalf of his applicant is that any development that would come in on this property would go through a PUD process. As you're well aware from several of your most recent development reviews that have happened over the last couple of meetings, what the purpose of a PUD is, we've talked about it before. It is to allow flexibility when there are unique situations and conditions that exist. That is certainly the case on the Noterman property for all of those reasons that we've talked about already, uniqueness of the site with regard to trees and steep slopes and cultural resources, potentially a variety of other things. So staff is of the opinion, even prior to hearing Mr. Shardlow's comments, that it is very likely any development that comes in on these properties would go through a PUD process because of their uniqueness. And there would need to be special consideration given and flexibility considered in order to preserve those bluff areas, maintain trees, prairie areas, other natural features as appropriate. So there will be a public process should a development proposal or a rezoning request, if the recommendation moves forward as it's presented. If those applications are ever received by the city, there would be full public process in order to establish zoning and review a development plan.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to balance that comment against, in my research for this, I forget what document I actually found this verbiage in, but when it talked about whether it was the Musa line or preservation of our Eden Prairie bluff aesthetic, just in general broad terms, it might have been the 2030 comp plan, it might have been the 2040 aspire, I'm not exactly sure where I found it, but it talked about using the ridge line of the bluff as a, a line of distinction between developable on the opposite side of the ridge versus, I'm going to use the word undevelopable, on the downward slope side of the ridge. And maybe that undevelopable is just too strong of a word, but, um, but in absence of knowing exactly where that came from, maybe you could tell me, and, and, and put that in context with the developability of this property on the downward slope of the bluff.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I believe it's a fair assumption that the language Mr. Farr is talking about is probably found in the 2030 comprehensive plan. Prior to the 2030 comp plan being adopted in 2008, in the mid to late nineties, there was a Musa expansion that took place for the western portion of Eden Prairie. Some of you may recall and have been, had been a part of that process. But in order to expand the Musa line as the city was looking to do it, in order to allow for orderly development and working in partnership with the Met Council to achieve that, that ridge line was what was determined to be at that point, everybody's best guess as to where development capabilities existed, where kind of, that was the, for lack of a better term, the, the easily identifiable line, that we know development can be accommodated on the upside of that line, not as sure about on the downside of that line, so this is where we're going to draw it through this process. Now, as we went through the aspire process and had discussions between the planning commission and city council in work sessions about, should the Musa line be amended through the 2040 plan, should it not be amended? As you know, the discussion was about that there are roughly twenty to twenty-five properties that that Musa line bisects those properties because it follows that ridge line rather than following property lines. Each of those properties is inherently unique and has different conditions. So, you know, as through that conversation, rather than making a wholesale change to that Musa boundary, having the ability to look at each request independently and weighing what development opportunities exist based on the detailed information specific to that site was probably the more pertinent way to address that type of development. Hopefully that answers your question.
It does, it does. So in our discretionary judgment, does a planning commission and ultimately going to the city council, um, if a development proposal came to us and we turned it down and the city council turned it down, would that, would we be at risk of, uh, uh, taking, uh, lawsuit against the city?
She wants me to answer that one.
I saw that.
[laughter]
So let me give you my view of, of, you know, the one oh one of the laws that govern this, and where we'd get into that, and I'll get to that question. So the comp plan is the founding document. Comp plan calls for single-family residential. That's ultimately what rules in terms of guiding for development. So if you've got zoning that's contrary to your comp plan, it can stay there for as long as it wants until the owner says, I'd really like to develop now in accordance with the comp plan. So the city has a choice then, change the comp plan or rezone the property in accordance with the broad outlines of the comprehensive plan. So, um, rarely does a court, um, require a taking and payment if you've got a disparity between your comp plan and your zoning. What you get is an order from the court saying, go back and make them compatible. And, uh, so in terms of the, a proposal to amend the comp plan, you need one reasonable basis upon which to deny that. Because it's a legislative function, and the court will, um, give deference to a city council's judgment on that as long as there's a reasonable basis for it. So you don't need ten reasonable bases for it, you need one reasonable basis. So you don't wind up in a taking situation in that kind of scenario. Where, um, so if you, if you have an unreasonable basis, something that's not founded in fact, uh, you know, so often you hear, if you put this road through, it's going to increase the traffic so much that, you know, to make it unlivable. And, um, and unless there is a factual basis presented on that kind of testimony, my advice over the years has been, it's fine for residents to have that opinion, but you should not rely on it unless there's some basis to the facts that are being presented. So, um, I'm, I'm not, uh, so had, had the recommendation come back to deny the comp plan change, and a reasonable basis set forth to support that, I would not have been fearful about a, a taking's claim. Doesn't mean one wouldn't have been made, it, it's just I would not have been fearful for it in, on, on this particular application, so.
Thank you. Other questions from the commission? Mr. Shardlow, did you want to?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could briefly.
Say it.
Um, when we started this process in 2013, Mike Franzen was the senior planner. I met with Mike, and we talked about this project and how complicated it was, and we agreed that we would deal with the commercial part of it first, and we would deal with the realignment of Spring Road and get all of those permits and entitlements in place. And after that point, we would come back and deal with the residential portion. As Ms. Klima said in her introductory remarks, there's approximately 1.5 acres of land in the extreme northeast corner of the property, which is within the Musa. And at that time, based on the comprehensive plan that existed, I asked Mike what his recommendation would be for the residential development he would support, and he said he would support three lots within the 1.5 acres and one for the remainder for a total of four. If you look at the topography and where the best vegetation is and the steepest slopes, it's in that extreme northeast corner. He also was talking about taking access directly off of Spring Road to serve those lots, which would have been an incredibly steep cut to get up to those lots. And so from the very beginning, I've always said that if, if we have the right to do four lots there, that we would want to do it with a planned unit development so we could put the lots where they would have less environmental impact. I believe that there's a plan that can save those trees, for instance. Two, with respect to the, um, the potential archaeological site, the Notermans did commission a study, they did have the, a group come out and take a look at it. They didn't do excavation or any, anything like that, but their opinion was that it was a man-made, a man-made, or not a man-made, I'm sorry, that it was a naturally occurring land form and not an Indian burial ground. But given the location of that land form, there's no reason why we can't put a protective covenant on it when we come back. So that, well, that's the kind of detail that we would come back with. Just again, very briefly, when we were putting this application together, we had previously, the Notermans and the Petersons and the Ryans had written a letter to the city and requested the opportunity to discuss the future use of their property as part of the 2040 comp plan update, and never received any response to that, uh, request. And so when we put this, this application together, the policy that was in the aspire Eden Prairie, uh, comprehensive plan draft, talked about not extending any utilities into the area beyond the Musa unless there's an existing failing on-site sewer disposal system, which essentially would prohibit any development beyond the current Musa line. And so if you remember the background I gave you about the Notermans' expectations, and I'm not going to bore you with how many people they've talked to, but we literally, all the way back to Carl Julie and Gene Dietz and, and so forth and so on, there have been representations that when sewer got there, they would have the opportunity to develop. And so when this application was put together, it seemed like there had been a reversal of the city's position on that, and that's in part why their application reads the way it does. Having said all of that, we completely accept the responsibility to come in with a development plan, and we would intend, even if the city wouldn't require it, that we would, we would come forward with a planned unit development because, um, the site really warrants it. Thank you.
Did you hear, can I respond?
Uh, we've actually closed the public hearing part.
But, uh, he did speak, and it seems to me that he'll respond to that.
Well, he's the proponent of the project, so the commission can ask him follow-up questions after the public hearing. Other questions from the commission? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I quickly ask, the amendments to the comprehensive plan, is there a reason why you wanted amendments to the comp plan as opposed to just amendments to the zoning ordinance itself? It seems like the comp plan charges the zoning ordinance to establish policy. At least that's how it's stated in the comprehensive plan. So why do you have to reach all the way back to the comp plan to make these changes? Why, why aren't we making a zoning amendment?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff is recommending amendments to the comprehensive plan to ensure that there is consistency between the comp plan and the zoning. While the current comp plan says that the rural district, as well as the other R1 districts, are corresponding districts to the low-density residential guiding, the fact that the additional detail that is proposed buttons that up with regard to consistency and conformity between those two documents.
All right, thank you. Other discussion items, questions?
Well, I'll, I'll just speak to my, my thinking on this. As I've said many times, I've been on the planning commission for a long time, so I've been through many of these, some of these discussions, and, and very familiar with the, kind of the red line of the top of the bluff as, you know, at least whether it was a spoken or unspoken policy about development. So in, in a sense, this, these two projects, this one in particular, is, is a little scary for me. Just, you know, it's, it's, you could use the term slippery slope, you can use a lot of, a lot of things there. It's a little scary because the bluffs are, are a very unique part of Eden Prairie that I think we all feel very strongly about and want to protect. Now what's the definition of protection? Does that mean no development? For me, not necessarily no development, but a very, very carefully controlled development. Something that really respects the integrity of the bluffs, and, and that historical part of Eden Prairie, I think is critical here. So what was, what was really scary to me is, is the legal discussions, which I think our city attorney has addressed well, that said, yeah, the city can't really do anything to protect these, these bluffs. You know, not only do we want to develop, but you can't have any control over that. And, and that was scary to me. I, I think I believe, after hearing the discussions, now that this, the city does have the ability through ordinances and, and all to, and the PUD process, to have a reasonable, and reasonable is important, a reasonable amount of control. And I hear the proponents saying that they're open to a reasonable approach. Now, getting to that point of agreement on what is reasonable, I think might be a little difficult, and, and frankly, it's a little scary. Just, you know, we're stepping over a line here that we, in a sense, at least in my experience, haven't stepped over yet. So I think I'm okay with the direction we're going, but I'm still nervous about it. I share your nervousness, Commissioner Kirk. I'm, I'm, I've spent the last three days imagining the site plan. And, and we weren't given one. And, uh, nothing in my imagination, um, looks like what's there now. So I'm struggling with that. And yet it's private property and they have property rights, and we need housing, and I, I think they're good and honest people that have served our community well, and they'll do a great job. That, that's an opinion of mine. I'm still afraid. But I, but I, I, I trust them at this point in time.
Commissioner Farber.
I'd just like to say something. I'm just going to toss it up to Commissioners Kirk and Farr both, please. If we go with a, an approach of a PUD, you know, would your interpretation be that it would give, you know, more control or maybe take some of that edginess off that you're seeing? That's what I'm, I'm kind of thinking that that would get more control over it, the nervousness. What do you think, as far as that, that there's, you know, that there might be, you know, somewhere about halfway?
In my opinion, more control. And the question is, and I, I think Mr. Rosso addressed it very well, we have to have a reasonable position based in, in law to be able to, um, how do I want to say this? To, to be able to take the care of the bluffs that we want to take. The PUD process is an absolute necessity, in my opinion, an absolute necessity. And then the question is, even within that PUD process, do we have enough control to protect it to the level that I feel the city wants to protect it? And as I said, I'm leaning towards the answer of yes, but I'm, share Mr. Farr's, we, we share our nervousness on that one. And, and again, this is, the proponent has shown nothing but cooperation, with the exception of a nineteen-page legal document, but we'll let that, we'll let that go because we understand...
I have all this.
No, we understand how, we understand how those things work. It's, it's taking a It's taking a position, we've heard both sides here, and for the most part, I think the proponent is showing a lot of respect for the city and a lot of respect for the city's wants relative to the bluffs.
I just want to add, annotate what you're saying, Commissioner, is in an era where climate change has become salient, my concern about this still hypothetical development is the impact of removing mature trees from a steep slope because we're seeing too much evidence of catastrophic heavy rain events, which are now occurring with greater frequency in Minnesota even, not just the coasts. What would be the impact on what is a very, very sacred area for Eden Prairie? And I share your nervousness about a hypothetical development. What would that mean to the ecosystem of those bluffs?
Perhaps I could say one other thing on the other side of nervousness, and it isn't necessarily as important, but I think it just needs to be articulated to some degree to the extent I can, which is, I happen to be on the Eden Prairie Historical Society Board of Directors. These two areas along Flying Cloud Drive and Spring Road are, fortunately for the city at this point, and it's time to look at further development, owned by people whose history with that area is literally integral with what I have experienced as a member of one of our nonprofits trying to do something in a different context, but similar to what we're all talking about here tonight. And I think this is an opportunity, as well as, you know, maybe to take my fellow commissioners' point of view, being nervous. This is what we don't know. We don't know things. But neither do the proponents of what they are looking at for development. What's there on that property has been there for a long time, and it has gone unchanged. And yet, we know new things about environmental concerns and other things. And we also have a comprehensive planning process that we didn't have back in those days. So, on balance, I think where I'm at is where I think we were headed, which is what we're being advised by our legal counsel and by staff, that this approach with a PUD, you know, as an effort to try to balance those interests some way, and to expect the responsible partners that we have here at this time, and that could change. And I, you know, it's sort of like an opportunity as well as a risk. So that's where I come down and support what I think we're sharing here together as a way to move forward.
So I have one other question for the commission. There was a request to make another public statement, and in fairness to Mr. Edstrom, the second public hearing on the agenda is basically the same situation. So I'm, as I'm thinking through this, I'm wondering if the commission would entertain reopening the public hearing so he can make the statement as it'll be related to next discussion. He would thereby be entitled to have a public comment at that time as well, so just throwing that out to the commission.
Your call.
Okay. So entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, moved to reopen the public hearing?
I'll second that.
All right. I have a Commissioner Kirk, and a second by Commissioner De Sanctus. All those in favor of reopening the public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, public hearings reopened. Mr. Edstrom, would you like to come up and speak?
I'll be very brief. I understand, you know, what the proponent says about assurances from the staff over the years. I'm also mindful of what was said in the legal opinion with respect to that issue. Lots of discussion about staff promises over the years. I think Mr. Rosso could...
Could you pull your microphone just a little closer?
I think Mr. Rosso could give you some advice here, but my understanding is that statements by staff of municipality are not binding on a city, on the commission, on the city council, or anyone else. If they were, then in effect, your commission, the city council, and the city itself would be stopped from doing something contrary to what the staff has promised a proponent or any citizen or anybody else. So to the extent what the staff has said to the proponent might be of some significance in your minds, please keep in mind you're not bound by those statements.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Farr, second by Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any further discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, we've put staff on the hot seat there, everybody except for our manager of Parks and Natural Resources. And of all things, we seem to be dwelling on natural resources. And if I may just throw a softball out to Mr. Born, what do you think about the value of these natural resources as it relates to private development rights?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, obviously with these two parcels being very close to conservation areas that we already own and maintain, what we have made the proponent aware of and kind of included in the staff report is that we would look for any proposal that came into the site, made special attempts to protect remnant prairies, protect the trees, protect these natural resources, that make sure that whatever comes through, they'd be mindful of these areas, and that, obviously, a lot of Eden Prairie residents and obviously the commission here has made everybody well aware that we cherish these areas and want to protect them as much as we can. So obviously, there are areas that we hold near and dear and want to protect if we can.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Well, in a sense, I think we're being asked to vote on a policy change, or formally vote on a policy change that has been evolving over the past, I don't know, 10 or 15 years. And, you know, are we going to allow development, hopefully extremely, and I believe, well-intended development on such a precious part of our city? And, you know, what's our voice to the city council going to be on that?
Did you have a voice you want to put behind it, or?
Well, I don't know. I believe the proponent is going to come with a responsible proposal. So I may be talking about a somewhat hypothetical position here, but if a proposal were to come that were deemed, in my mind, as not being responsible, let's say again hypothetically, we recommended the approval from the planning department on this proposal, and the proponent hypothetically were to come with an unacceptable proposal, do we as a city have the, would we as a city have the ability to say no to that? And I think I'm hearing the answer to that is yes. If it were an unreasonable proposal that was supported by, how do I say, violating ordinances and policies of the city. So I still, I don't want to give up that ability to say no if the proposal's unreasonable. And again, I don't believe that that will happen on this project, but I think we're also setting the stage for a number of more potential projects where it could happen. I don't know, did that make sense?
I think I heard the same, as you and Mr. Russo, you said that we would indeed have the ability, correct?
I wouldn't put it in exactly the same words, but we have considerable control in a PUD process to work matters out. I would, as I listened to the discussion, I wouldn't be so fearful of a reasonable proposal that wasn't entirely within your vision or the city's vision. I'd be more concerned about an unreasonable proposal that came forward because then there's, it makes it much more difficult to reach consensus. And so the PUD process, and I've gone through this with another developer, is a matter that the developer wants some things that the city doesn't have to give under its ordinance. The city wants some things in return that the developer doesn't necessarily have to give, and it's a matter of taking those two positions and working out an acceptable solution so that the city obtains what it believes is in the best interest of the city and its citizens, and the developer, as a part of that process, then gets waivers under the PUD process that the city is not obligated to give and has to go through a process to establish the basis for why we're granting those waivers. So I think it's a good method to deal with properties such as this.
Further discussion or comments, or?
Well, I'll put, I was going to say, before we vote, I just want to make sure that we're taking the right actions. I'm looking at the blue highlighted text for us for motion number two, and it reads, if we get this far, mind you, I'm just reading the text, it talks about recommending approval of the Noterman Residential Development 2030 Comprehensive Guide Plan amendments, based on the information, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so all that motion is, is we're voting on the comp plan amendments. In the staff report, at the end of the staff report, the staff recommendations include more, though, and as Julie articulated this during her comments, where she's recommending guide plan change from rural to low-density residential, we've talked about that, Musa boundary extension on 8.34 acres, and then the comprehensive plan text changes as noted. So are we missing content in the motion phraseology, Julie?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Commissioner Farr, the motion that is provided for you, for your ease, referencing comp plan amendments incorporates all three of those bullet points in the staff report. So the comp plan, in that case, would be amended to change the guiding on the property, that's one, would be amended to extend the Musa boundary, and thirdly, would be changed to revise the text as noted in the staff report before you this evening.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I wanted to make sure it was all-encompassing there.
But just to, again, clarify further, but it would deny the zoning?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, there is another motion, motion three in your annotated agenda, that denies the rezoning.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the Noterman Residential Development 2030 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, based on the information contained in the October 18th, 2018 staff report.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kirk, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Freiberg. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I also move to recommend denial of the request to rezone property from rural to R1-13.5, based on the information contained in the October 18th, 2018 staff report.
Motion from Commissioner Kirk, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Second from Commissioner De Sanctus, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion passes. All right. And that concludes the first public hearing for Noterman Residential Development. We have another public hearing. Second hearing tonight is the Peterson Residential Development, location northeast quadrant of Flying Cloud Drive and Spring Road, request for guide plan change from parks, open space to low-density on 7.57 acres, zoning district change from rural to R1-13.5 on 12.3 acres, MUSA, Musa boundary extension on 12.3 acres. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, John Chardlow with Stantec. My presentation here will be even more brief than in the previous. With me this evening is Seaver Peterson, representing the owners of the property. Again, we accept and support the staff recommendation. I think in this case, it's important to make the distinction that the Petersons really have no intention of developing their property at any time in the near future, that this is really motivated by the fact that the city is going through its comprehensive plan amendment and talking about long-range planning for the Musa and sewer within that planning period up to the year 2040. And so it was important to the Petersons that when the development does occur on their property, that it's done with environmentally sound development practices, which would reduce the amount of grading that would be required on the site and have less impact. And so they do expect that there will be some form of development that occurs on this property within that 2040 timeframe, and that they would hope to have access to municipal utilities to have less adverse environmental impact with that development. The other thing that was of importance is that the current land use plan shows a portion of the Peterson property as parks and open space, even though it's owned privately, and there's nothing in the city's parks plan that has an implementation or talks about any time in the future in which the land would be acquired. And so since there are no plans to purchase the land for public use, the owners want the comprehensive plan to designate it for private use. Again, very important to note that the Petersons have no near-term plans for development. Again, they will gladly accept the responsibility to come forward with a development plan at such time as they request the rezoning. They simply want the 2040 comprehensive plan to support the development of this property for private use with municipal utilities when development is proposed at a future date. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Chardlow?
Thank you.
Julie, will you be doing the staff report again?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, similar to the previous request, this application is requesting both amendment to the comprehensive plan for guiding purposes and Musa extension, and also a rezoning of the entire 12 acres, roughly, to 13.5. The difference with this property is that it is currently completely outside the Musa boundary. The Noterman property did have a small portion that was in the Musa boundary, and in this particular case, some of the parcels are currently guided park and open space, as Mr. Chardlow mentioned, and the remainder are guided rural currently. They are seeking a low-density residential guiding on the entire 12 acres. Staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan regiding to low-density residential and the Musa extension, and the comprehensive plan text amendment changes, as were proposed under the previous application as well, the same text into the comprehensive plan. And staff is recommending denial of the rezoning to R1-13.5 in order to retain the rural zoning until such time as a development plan is provided, and then analysis can further influence and inform the appropriate zoning district based on the specific site conditions.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and speak for or against the project, please do so Good evening. If you would, state your name and spell for the record, please.
Good evening. Excuse me, Joel Wiegert, W-I-E-G-E-R-T. I am at 10131 Eden Prairie Road. I hadn't had any intent or plan on speaking tonight, but I guess now hearing the same proposal, I'm more affected by the Notermans' proposal that you just considered. I'm struck, because we've got the same issue here, at the willingness to make decisions that I think you understand the ramifications of, based on hypotheticals.
Pull your microphone a little closer.
I am struck by the willingness to make decisions that I think the commission understands the ramifications of, in terms of a snowball effect, based on hypotheticals. And the struggle seems to me to be that we really don't know what's going to happen. We're going to assume everyone's going to be reasonable. I don't contest or disagree that that's probably going to be the case, but we're putting a lot of faith in reasonableness, and I've seen plenty of developers that aren't very reasonable. And when we do things such as pass a con... developers that aren't very reasonable. And when we do things such as pass a comp or a guide change based on hypotheticals, well, we'll assume they're gonna be reasonable. Well, what about the next person down the bluff? Are we gonna assume they're gonna be reasonable with their proponent or their proposal? There's a simple solution. I mean, we're hearing we don't have any intent to develop this, but we know there's actual intent to develop. Let's see the development. Why don't we wait? Why are we putting the cart before the horse? Let's see what the proposals are, and then let's decide whether we're gonna change a comp plan or a zoning change. As we heard Mr. Rosso declare before, the courts are gonna say, well, let's compatible, let's make them compatible. That's the resolution. Well, we've already made the guide change, or the guide change decision with respect to the Nodderman property, so we've already got the argument. Well, the zoning says we can't rezone, but we now need to make it compatible with the comp plan. We're putting the cart before the horse. Let's see what the development plan is, and then make the decision as to whether you're going to change the comp plan or change the zoning. That seems to me the simple resolution here in terms of satisfying everybody's concern about what we're actually doing. And this snowball that's starting down the hill, if we're going to say, okay, resident owner A will allow you to develop past the MUSA line, past the ridge, past the bluff, resident B, we're not gonna allow you, well, then resident B is gonna say, well, why not? Let's see what we're dealing with before we make decisions that are gonna come back and bite us in the butt down the line. It may be an absolutely reasonable proposal. Here's what we're gonna do with this property. Here's why we think we should change the comp plan. Here's why we think it should be rezoned. Let's make a decision on that. I don't have necessarily any objection. I may not have any objection to what's gonna be proposed to take place underneath my property. I've seen suggestions of 20 units, I will object to that. But we're saying, before we see any of this, which, by the way, would be an unreasonable proposal, go ahead, here's the keys of the car, we'll trust you, not sure where you're going with it, but we'll trust you. The simple solution is, tell me where you're going, then we'll decide whether you get the keys of the car. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak regarding this project proposal? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I think we can.
Mr. Charlo, you wanna speak?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just very briefly, the MUSA line is a regional growth management tool. When the Metropolitan Land Planning Act was passed back in 1974, it charged the Metropolitan Council with planning for the region's four systems, sanitary sewer, transportation, airports, and parks and open space. The purpose for going through our planning process every 10 years is for the communities and the Metropolitan Council to mutually understand what portion of the cities are gonna be urbanized within the planning period. So, I would submit to you that throughout the 40-plus years that that process has been underway, cities have routinely extended the MUSA to thousands of acres of land without specific development plans. And so, that's really what we're talking about. We're talking about a fact that you are in the process of updating the 2040 comprehensive plan, and this property owner is saying, we have no immediate plans to develop our property, but we do expect that it will develop within the planning process, the planning period, and when it does, we want it to be connected to Metropolitan Sewer. And so, this idea that you would only extend the MUSA on a parcel-by-parcel basis just isn't consistent with the regional planning process.
Thank you. Questions or further discussion with the Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Farr.
I'll just bring up the issue of the corner. I trust that the maps in the staff report are current with the new Spring Road intersection alignment, and if so, there seems to be a zigzag exception, that the roadway is a little bit widened there at the intersection. I'm not sure why, and maybe, maybe Mr. Ru can explain that. But regardless of that fact, there's a commercial use on the other side of the corner, and they're asking for rezoning to residential throughout their entire parcel. And I'm just wondering if we want to think about, comment on, restrict, or otherwise ponder an alternative use than single, low-density single-family residential at this corner, and if we would be threatened by that if the proposal came back with something like that. So, there are a lot of loaded questions in there. I'm sorry, Mr. Ru, maybe you know the answer to the question. If the staff report graphics are up to date with the new Spring Road alignment, and if so, what are the exceptions at the corner for the widened right-of-way there?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, the exhibit that's shown in the staff report is not up to date. It includes the current, or the, I should say, the old Spring Road alignment. So, there would be, the new Spring Road alignment tends to go a little further or straighter south, so it would take a portion of that corner away.
If you saw this one right? Page three is this one right?
Yeah, Julie just pointed out that the, on page three of the report, which shows the existing and requested one, I was looking at the aerial view on the first page, is incorrect. The second, on the page number three, where it's got the colored graphic, that's, depicts the current alignment.
Thank you. So, you see on that graphic specifically, the gray area right above the words Flying Cloud Drive, that seemed to be considerably wider than the normal right-of-way width along the corridor. Is there an explanation for that?
Yes, that's a stormwater facility and a retaining wall in there.
All right.
And part of the bridge, but that's all, you know, it's all public right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So, I throw that out maybe more for discussion than anything because of the corner.
Any reaction to Commissioner Farr's comment?
Well, thinking about it, when it comes to commercial development down there, I think the Lyons Tap is very unique. And in my mind, simply because Lyons Tap is, is across the street, does not drive me to think or to desire that there be a commercial, additional commercial development on that corner. That's, I hadn't thought about it before you brought it up, so it's a great, great point to think about. But that's my first impression is, so to me, if, if we're guiding it for residential, that would be more the direction that I would like to see. Now, you know, there's an argument there, is, is it a good spot for residential? I'd rather see residential there, not that perhaps anybody would want to live right on that corner, but than, than a commercial, than carving out some commercial land there. Just an opinion.
Give Mr. Sanctus.
Mr. Ru, I have a question for you. Is the proposed intersection going to be a signalized intersection or signs only?
It's planned to be just a, a stop condition on Spring Road, as it is today.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Farr.
Given the speed limit on Flying Cloud Drive, is the access to this property solely off of Spring Road, and if so, is the stacking distance a concern? Is there enough distance between the intersection and the northerly property line to safely enter and exit the site with the roadway system conveying to the, to the far eastern tip of that property?
I would expect that any development that occurs on that site would line up with the, the proposed driveway for the Lyons Tap project, which was approved a month or so ago at a recent meeting. So, and that is about as far back as, as practical. I think it's, it's not shown on this graphic, but it's probably two-thirds of the way up that property line. That's, that's where the current driveway, or the proposed driveway is for the Lyons Tap proposal. The other thing to keep in mind on this site is that there are quite a few, there's a creek that goes through the site. Riley Creek divides that property, so there would be some restrictions on development along the creek. There's also some, some steep slopes on the eastern portion. So, there's, even though this property looks rather large, it's, by the time you really look at what's developable, it's a much smaller parcel than, than as indicated in this graphic.
You didn't get that comparative graphic like we did on the prior proposal for the 50-foot setback all the way around. It seems like the developable area on this long and narrow site would be rather restricted, especially with the steep slopes that you mentioned. But just, just fundamentally with setbacks, there's probably not a lot of land left over. Just an observation.
Any other comments? Everyone kind of the same as last time, right? Entertain a motion, I think we're still in public hearing at this point.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Right, a motion from Commissioner Freiber, a second for Commissioner Kirk to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed.
I'll make a motion, number two, to recommend approval of the residential development, the 2030 Comprehensive Plan amendments for the Peterson property based on the information contained in the October 18 staff report.
A motion from Commissioner Higgins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Freiber. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Entertain another motion?
I'll also move to recommend denial of the request to rezone the property from rural to R1-13.5 based on information contained in that same October 18 staff report.
And I will second that motion.
A motion for Commissioner Higgins and a second for Commissioner Sanctus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Good evening. Moving on, we have another public hearing for Southwest Transit Garage, location 14405 West 62nd Street, request for planned unit development, district review with waivers on 10.05 acres, site plan review on 10.05 acres. The proponent of the project, please step forward.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, I was asked to be here for those other two hearings. Unless you want me here, not necessarily for this one, but for the next one, I would stay, but otherwise, I would leave.
Would anyone like Mr. Rosso to stay or?
No.
Just for the good company, but not questions, I guess.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening. I'm Gary Hay with Hay Dobbs, PA. We're an architecture-
Could you pull your microphone just a little closer?
Oh, okay. I'm Gary Hay with Hay Dobbs, PA. We're an architecture and urban design firm. We're here in behalf of Southwest Transit, and with me tonight is Dave Jacobson and Mike Dart from Southwest Transit as well. We'd like to start by thanking you all for hearing our request, and in particular, we'd like to thank the planning staff. We've worked very closely with them over the last six months in coming to an agreement and resolution how we might resolve parking issues on the Eden Prairie garage site. As you know, Southwest Transit is a vital partner in the regional transportation system. They have two offices located here in Eden Prairie, the corporate office just down the street on Technology Drive, and the Eden Prairie Garage, which houses maintenance facility, bus storage, and a small component of offices on that particular site. As you know, again, in addition to supporting the regional transportation system with the Southwest LRT, coming to Eden Prairie, they'll be taking the Southwest Transit corporate office and providing a new transit facility and expanded parking on the existing site where the corporate office is today. We looked at a number of strategies and where we might relocate the corporate office staff. We looked at other Southwest Transit facilities around the region, and in the end, we settled on staying here in Eden Prairie and remaining a vital component of Eden Prairie, the citizens of Eden Prairie, and again, supporting that regional transportation system. But along with that comes a need for how do we house staff and how do we park staff on the existing site that's already inadequate. Site today is just over 10 acres. It's got 78 parking stalls, kinda depends on how you count them, which ones are striped and which ones are volunteers, if you will. Today, the site is about 47% impervious surface, and part of that 47% impervious surface is also the 100,000-plus square foot bus garage, again, which is about 80% bus storage, probably about 15% maintenance facility, and about 5% office space. So, we start to look at what the actual parking need on that site is. As we've gone through this process, we've looked, and the overall total need on that site is a minimum of, minimum of 115 spaces. 80 of those are supported by regular drivers. There's 13 maintenance staff. There's office staff, supervisors, IT staff, and then projected visitor parking on the site. And one of the things that you know is that Southwest Transit provides services during special events like the State Fair, Twins Games, Viking, Vikings Games, and they were a vital component to support the Ryder Cup in Chanhassen, Chaska just recently. So, all total onsite, we probably need about 140 to 187 spaces based on the day and the event. So, when we look at how we might accommodate that parking, we took a close look at the site and sort of the irregular configuration of the parking, but we're also very sensitive to the fact that, you know, currently, because the site is within the Shoreland District, you restrict impervious surface to 30%. But when the site was acquired by Southwest Transit for the purpose of the bus garage, it exceeded that percentage from the beginning. And if you look in the large photo, photo in my upper left, if you look across the railroad tracks to the adjacent industrial development, the site that we're proposing, the changes we're proposing are compatible, and we still, I think, exceed the amount of green space to comparable sites within this area. In terms of neighbors, to the north is County Road 62, the golf course, the golf course extends to the west of the site, and then the east and south portions of the site are really industrial and railroad properties. So, you can see by some of the other images, buses and cars really take up the site predominantly. For the most part, during the active parts, during operations on the site, it's just buses circulating around the building and then out and onto 62. So, our proposal is to take some of those existing flatter areas being sensitive to, again, the green space on the site and trying to- again, the green space on the site, and trying to put the parking in a way that it's, you know, not as obvious and a little more sensitive to the site. The one thing that I do want to point out is in the lower left-hand image, you can see the existing diesel fueling station. Our proposal also looks to add an above-ground gasoline fueling station. And the services that Southwest Transit has, excuse me, such as Prime, those vehicles are smaller, and those are gas-driven vehicles as opposed to diesel vehicles. So it's much more convenient and more cost-effective, better use of resource to have that gasoline available onsite. So you can see in the proposed site plan, we're reconfiguring the parking on the north side of the building. The yellow spots are where we are introducing new parking stalls. We're removing some existing hard surface loading docks, which are no longer used, and converting those to parking. Some of these areas, in particular on the south side, the 12 and 9 stalls are sort of tucked into the embankment. We would be holding that embankment back with kind of a rock face concrete block retaining wall, and that's consistent with the other retaining walls that are on the site. The bluer areas we've, on this site, are the island areas. And so, again, we've worked with staff to increase those islands and variety of landscaping and planting within the site. So we're just over the 5% parking requirements that the city has. This slide isn't overly interesting, but we do pretty much meet the requirements for lighting at the property line, with the exception of near the fuel tank. We're just over, and we'll work to adjust those existing light fixtures to get those to fit within the lighting requirements on the property line. Paving in the new parking areas, so we are using pavers as opposed to bituminous or concrete. We've selected the pavers in conjunction with working with Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. And while they're predominantly hard, they do allow water to get into the ground. And when one really gets into and reads the details, the granular fill underneath the pavers is designed to store the water and allow us to control the rate at which water moves back down into the stormwater pond on the site. And then there's a small detail up in the upper right, sort of typical retaining wall So with that, we'd like, again, like to thank you all for considering our proposal and supporting local and regional transportation initiatives. I think the one piece that I forgot to mention is that I believe the schedule kind of keeps moving around a little bit, but in December of this year, the council would like to take the existing corporate office building in order to start construction on the Southwest LRT. Julie might know the schedule more specifically, but again, thank you very much. We appreciate your hearing our story.
Thank you. Any initial questions for Mr. Hayes?
I have several questions for you, sir. The first is, as part of the comprehensive plan, the city is concerned about the silhouette and the profile along County Highway 62. In what way or form will your proposed project alter that silhouette?
Very little along Highway 62. As you can see from the images, there's dense trees around the site that screen the site. And in addition, along the frontage road on Highway 62, there's a significant berm right there. The only place that you really see into the site is the driveway, and our parking is tucked back away from that.
Are you planning to add any additional large caliber trees to that location?
Not specifically, although, when you first come in on one of the island, there's an island today, which is a rock island, and we're converting that to vegetation, and we're putting, I don't remember the exact species or caliber, but we are putting trees in that island, so we are enhancing that entry sequence.
My second, or a follow-up question, is you're relocating the corporate office, so how many staff in total will be moving to that location for work?
10 in total.
Okay, so presumably a negligible impact on traffic flow on the frontage road and-
Correct.
-adjoining areas.
Yeah. And again, because of the operations of the bus, they're pre-peak operations, and so before the peak actually hits on Highway 62, they're out servicing the community.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner-
Two quick questions. One is, could you go back a slide to your C4.0 civil plan?
Oh, the one with the details?
The last slide, right before. Thank you.
Yep.
There you go. Yep. So in the middle there, your pervious paver section with that crushed rock storage water area, water storage area, that abuts in your impervious treatment parking area number two, which is the northerlymost one. All along that parking area, you have the retaining wall section in the upper right-hand corner, and there's a large, wide crushed rock backfill to that retaining wall as well. So I believe if you take your pavement section and abut it to your cross-section of your retaining wall, your water storage crushed rock is going to drain freely into the backfill of the retaining wall, then back out to the retention pond at a faster rate than you probably want. Has that been a comment from your civil engineer or anybody like that? Just be aware, maybe, that we don't want that storage water to overflow too quickly and out the retaining wall?
Correct. And so I know that they, our engineers have worked closely with Nine Mile to go through the details. And so I think there's actually additional detail in that section that would show parking on the low side as well of the retaining wall.
Parking? Did you say parking?
Right. So, I'll just point straight-
Okay, okay.
So, on the left-hand side of the detail here-
Yep.
Okay. So, this section here would be abutting the bottom of the retaining-
Bottom of the wall?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought the parking was on the high side.
No, it's on the low, I'm sorry, it's on the low side.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll look closer at the grading plan. Thank you for that clarification. Second question I have is on any job that has fleet services in it. We have the full parking lot during the day and an empty bus garage here and just the reverse at night. Have you looked at any way possible to share those parking resources so that we wouldn't always have to have an empty surface, somehow sharing automobile parking with the buses that have gone out for the day?
We have looked at, you know, different ways in order to store vehicles on the site. The one dilemma that we have is that the storage is full, and, you know, when the drivers come in in the morning, and when the drivers come back in the evening, if there's vehicles in the storage, then they've got to move the vehicles in order to park the buses.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any questions?
Thank you. Julie, will you walk through the plans report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is a request for a PUD district review. There are three waivers that are requested. In addition, it's also a request for a site plan review as outlined by the applicant's representative. So as stated, the request is largely centered around the addition of parking area. There are no building enhancements or additions proposed to the site, only parking improvements in order to address the additional parking need of the Southwest Transit organization. The three waivers that are requested, the first one was alluded to in the applicant's comments, it's to increase the impervious surface area from what it is today by an additional, I believe it's 1.02% over what is there today. The other two waivers that are requested, one is for a drive aisle width. City code currently requires 25-foot drive aisle width. Staff found one drive aisle out there that is 24.6 inches. It is an existing condition. It is not a new and proposed condition, so it would be memorializing in existing condition on the site. The other is with regard to parking stall depth. City code requires parking stalls to be 19 feet deep. There, all of the new parking stalls being added meet this requirement, but there are a few stalls onsite that are 18 feet deep. And again, that's an existing condition, and staff is recommending approval of that waiver as well. We have, as a city in the past, approved those waivers. We do certainly find that there's still enough maneuverability, if that's a word, onsite for vehicles. So staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to the conditions outlined in your staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. Questions for Julie of the city? Question?
Sure. Ms. Chairman, just maybe for the, to talk about the gas, fuel gas tank, the additional one for gasoline instead of diesel fuel. There's a lot of paperwork involved in the supplemental for groundwater concerns for impervious surface area, but I didn't see much on any jurisdictional or regulatory review comments about adding the above-grade gas fuel station in such a sensitive area for groundwater. Are there any regulatory compliance issues that we ought to be considering in this application?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there's nothing additional with regard to the above-ground fuel. From the city's perspective, I would defer to the applicant if they need to be in communication with MPCA or any other licensing organization, but from a city's standpoint, there are no additional reviews, other than what would be done through the fire department and county hazardous materials, things of that sort.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? I appreciate the staff not letting us see such a slide on the drive with the details. Puts credibility in all the things you bring to us. Entertain a motion? No, I'm sorry, it's public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for or against this project? Step forward now. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion with Commissioner Farr and a second for Commissioner Kirk. All those in favor of closing public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed? Public hearing's closed.
Mr. Chairman? I move to recommend approval of the Southwest Transit Garage project based on information contained in the October 18, 2018, staff report and plan stamp dated October 10, 2018.
Second.
A motion for Commissioner Farr and a second for Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Looks like we have one more hearing this evening. Public hearing? Code amendment for sexually oriented businesses and pawn shops. Request to amend City Code, Chapter 11, relating to sexually oriented businesses and pawn shops.
Julie, will you be speaking on behalf?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, at the city council's goal-setting session, envisioning session that they hold annually in late winter, there was discussion about sensitive uses such as pawn shops and sexually oriented businesses, and what regulations the city has or does not have. So staff came back to them a couple of months later in one of their work sessions to inform them what was or was not on the books. In the case of pawn shops, those pawn shops are defined and are regulated in, I believe it's Chapter 5, the licensing chapter of the city code. So that means any pawn shop coming to Eden Prairie could not open until they went through the appropriate review and licensing process. City of Eden Prairie currently does not have any pawn shops or precious metal brokers currently in town, but there is a process in place for licensing, and through that licensing requirements, there was discussion about which zoning districts they would be allowed in, and it specifically called out the regional commercial and the commercial regional services districts as appropriate. None of that information was carried over into Chapter 11 zoning. With regard to sexually oriented businesses, we are one of few communities who had nothing on the books with regard to sexually oriented businesses. They were not defined nor specifically limited to any geographic location within the city. So the city council took that information in, and then in June, adopted a moratorium on both sexually oriented businesses and pawn shops in order to allow staff time to further research and study the issues, as well as come back with any recommendations to amend the city code in order to allow for protection of public welfare, as well as sound planning practices. So city staff, including the police department, planning staff, legal advice, has been working on these issues since that time. So we're back before you this evening with some amendments that are proposed to Chapter 11. There will also be some amendments proposed to Chapter 5. However, Chapter 5 is a section of the city code that does not require a public hearing at the planning commission, so those require, or those code changes will go straight to the city council. So with regard to the licensing for pawn shops that exists in Chapter 5, staff is proposing that the definition of pawn shops and precious metal dealers or precious metal brokers be carried over from Chapter 5 into Chapter 11, so that they would have consistent definitions, as well as Chapter 11 zoning would be amended to allow specifically pawn shops as a permitted use in the corresponding zoning districts of commercial, regional, and regional commercial services. So that in a nutshell are the changes proposed to pawn shops. With regard to sexually oriented businesses, the police department, as well as the city attorney, will be bringing forward to the city council recommendations for licensing requirements for sexually oriented businesses. As a part of those, there is a definition that is proposed. Staff has included that definition in your staff report, and that same definition is proposed to be included into Chapter 11, so that we're comparing apples to apples when we're talking about those types of businesses. With regard to the locations that are appropriate for sexually oriented businesses, staff is recommending that those businesses be located within the I-2 and I-5 zoning districts. Now, the I, industrial zoning districts, also have another provision that talks about only 15% of the gross floor area of a building can be used for retail purposes. So staff is proposing sexually oriented businesses be allowed in those two industrial districts, subject to that 15% retail limitation within the industrial districts. And that 15% is a cumulative total, rather than a per-user total, so if there is a multi-tenant building with multiple retail spaces, staff would take a look at all of those individually and make sure that it does not exceed the required 15%. In addition, staff is recommending distance requirements for sexually oriented businesses of 1,000 feet from any church, daycare, place of worship, excuse me, daycare, school, residential use, or another sexually oriented business in order to avoid the clustering of similar uses. In addition, that restriction is also proposed for pawn shops, that there be at least 1,000 feet of distance between any two pawn shops. Distance being measured from the outermost parcel line to the next closest parcel line, so not from door to door, because you might have a great big parcel that has multiple tenants on it, so you wouldn't measure from the location of the business, but rather from the perimeter property line. So staff is recommending approval of those code changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Julie?
Yes.
What was the rationale for the city staff to delineate 1,000 feet as a buffer- as a buffer between the sexually oriented business and places of worship, residential areas? To me, 1,000 seems very arbitrary and insufficient.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so through our research, staff took a look at a variety of other communities, primarily most of them local, with regard, local meaning regional in the metropolitan area. And some of them have no distance requirements between those other types of uses. Some have anywhere from, ranging from 250 feet to 750 feet to 1,000 feet. So anywhere on that spectrum. We did not find any community that had a buffer or distance requirement exceeding 1,000 square, or 1,000 feet, excuse me.
Julie, could I ask you a question? Has, has there ever been an adult-oriented business in Eden Prairie that you're aware of? That, I mean, the way you described it, that we didn't have any regulation at all on it, it's just a question I just have, that, you know, how did we survive all this time that, you know, not having one of that, being that open?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there's a variety of factors that could go into why Eden Prairie has not been a identifiable location for such business. It could be that our property values don't align with the business needs of those types of uses. It could be that there's not a market in this particular location. It could be that there are others in other communities nearby. There's a variety of...
The answer is no. And there is no current applications for either businesses, correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there are no applications for either. This is a completely proactive proposed change.
Julie, the distance requirement for the pawn shops, how does that relate to other communities? Similar?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, of the communities we looked at, we only found one community that had a distance requirement for pawn shops from places of worship, schools, daycares. That was the community of Maple Grove, and they had a 750-foot distance requirement. But as we took a look at those regulations and having the conversation ongoing at the same time as a sexually oriented business, it seemed prudent to provide for the distance requirement from other pawn shops so as to not provide for a gathering of similar uses. We do not have any pawn shops in town currently, so nobody would acquire a non-conforming status if, if this were adopted. It would be something that is on the books and folks would be aware of if such a business was able to locate in Eden Prairie.
Other questions or discussion?
I would like to invite discussion of the 1,000-foot buffer, how other commissioners feel about 1,000 being sufficient with respect to places of worship or daycares or schools.
Are you speaking to the sexually oriented business or both?
Am I right in assuming that 1,000 is, that's the highest of any of the cities?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is correct.
Okay, because, yeah, I would be in favor of whatever the maximum is. I don't know if it would make any difference being 1,200 or 1,500, you know, to 1,000, but I'm open.
Mr. Chairman? I'll try and, I'll try and answer Commissioner De Sanctus's question. My first answer is, I'm glad we're on the upper end of the findings of our regional area. I think that's a good, a good place to be. Number two, as an architect, when we design signage to be visible from properties, the letter height, of course, increases depending upon the distance. And at 1,000 feet, you're, you can't read signage unless it's extraordinarily large, which would violate our signage code. So I know that at 1,000 feet, nothing will be legible from a visible, from a visibility standpoint. So, so that signage, the sign on the door won't be, won't be visible. And, and the third observation I'd make is that even though we're, we have the metric of distance of separation, to me, it's more about the route than it is anything. And that's, that's extraordinarily difficult to regulate. So if, if, if the kids have to travel down a road to get to their school and this facility is going to be 1,500 feet away, you know, we still lose. So it's, it's the route along the public way that would concern me more than, than, that's just another metric. And I think that would be a slippery slope to try and, with our street system, and we'd have to look at every, every situation like that. And I, I think we'd drive staff nuts trying to do that. So I'm satisfied with 1,000 feet because of the first two observations.
Also, I suppose the slippery slope has to do with we optimize the distance. If we increase it beyond 1,000, in effect, is the city legislating what kind of businesses they want to introduce into the city. So I guess that is a tricky balance there.
I, I'm with Commissioner Freiberg and Commissioner Farr on, I think we ought to be on the upper end of, of the regional norms, and I'm comfortable with that. I'm, actually, I thought the pawn shop restriction was a little restrictive. I mean, I'm, I'm fully supportive of the 1,000 feet for the sexually oriented business. On the pawn shop side, when I, my first reading through here is, I was surprised at that large number. I, I'm not troubled by it, but I was surprised at it. But I think on the higher, being on the higher side of the regional norm for the sexually oriented businesses is, is good for me.
Julie, a question. In your research, is there a law related to selling illegal drugs near a school and within a certain distance? Do the penalties are enhanced, do you know?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, did you say legal or illegal?
Illegal.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, our research didn't get into any of those types of details. That's certainly something that I could check with the city attorney on and report back to you.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I guess I agree with everyone. I like that we're on the upper limits and I think it's a reasonable approach.
All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come and speak for or against this proposal, please step forward. Seeing none, further discussion, questions?
I move to close the public hearing.
All right.
Second?
Commissioner Higgins, Commissioner Freiberg, second to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings closed.
I'll move to recommend approval of the, oops, got the wrong page here. I move to recommend approval of the code amendment for sexually oriented businesses and pawn shops based on information contained in the October 18, 2018, staff report and draft ordinances.
Second?
All right, a motion from Commissioner Higgins, a second from Commissioner Kirk. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That's the end of the public hearings tonight. Julie, do you have any planners' reports this evening?
Yes, sir, actually, I do. Earlier this spring, when the city council adopted the moratoriums for sexually oriented businesses and pawn shops, they also adopted a moratorium with regard to retail sales of firearms. You may recall, rather, that there was some discussion on that as well. Staff does not have a recommendation to present to you on, on that item. Rather, with the adoption of the moratorium, the city council directed that staff research if there are any studies that provide research or information about the effects or impacts of firearms, retail sales, and also provide the opportunity to get input from the community. So staff has done both of those. And with regard to the first issue of research, we have found that there really is no research out there, either locally or nationally, that provides correlation or impacts between firearm sales and, and other impacts. With regard to input from the community, the city used its online tool of City Connect in order to gain feedback from the community. And that feedback was largely a mixed bag of responses and did not provide a single directive answer. So as a part of your discussion this evening, staff is looking for feedback or reaction from the planning commission with regard to this issue of retail sales of firearms within the community. As I said, staff does not have a recommendation. We're not looking for a motion or a vote. Rather, we're just looking for feedback from the commission that we can carry forward to the city council at a, at a work session in the future as we provide feedback on, on these sensitive uses that were addressed through moratorium.
Would we be invited to that? Was that one of those council workshops where we'd be invited?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, yes, you'd certainly be invited, much as you were invited to the sensitive use workshop back in, I believe it was in May.
Any initial?
I haven't had a chance to think about it all, so I don't have any comment, any comments from the commission? Were there specific questions they asked on City Connect?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the questions with regard to City Connect that were poised to the community, I'm, I'm not going to be able to state them verbatim, but in essence, they're, were, do you have any concerns about firearms being sold in Eden Prairie? If you do have any concerns, are there specific areas where you would like to see those sales take place? And I think the last question focused on, do you support any distance requirements for retail sales from uses such as places of worship, schools, daycares, residential uses, things of that sort?
I, I had a question. Was it not, is it not true that what used to be the Gander Mountain Outlet and Walmart sell firearms?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that we do have firearms dealers in town currently, and the discussion was about new firearms dealers, not about addressing existing.
Kind of feels like we need some time to think about it.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you'll certainly be invited to the work session in order to address, or when there's discussion on this issue.
Thank you. Is that it for planners' reports?
Yes, sir.
All right. Members' reports tonight. Continuing business, new business, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Kirk, second by Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meetings adjourned.